Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Could I have a motion for adoption of remote participation?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you. Have we received, Ed, have we received any public comment?
We have not, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Okay, under Chair's report, first of all, I know that many of you had trouble receiving the materials from tonight, and I will work with Julia after today's meeting to figure out what was going on. We don't have that problem moving forward. I also would like to, as you all know, last fall, we approved membership on committees. I'd like to talk about the Superintendent Negotiation and Evaluation Committee, which currently consists of Jennifer as Chair, Dave O'Connor, Ford Spalding, and myself are on the committee. What I would like to do is to remove Ford and myself and to add Steve Ladue to that committee. So we would have Jennifer Leone as Chair, Dave O'Connor, and Steve Ladue.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
So you think these guys can have any work to do? Is that why you're, you know, you're leaving because there's nothing happening and you don't want to, you know?
They have enough to do. I think. I think that they have enough on their plates already.
So thank you all very much. That's my only comment.
And actually, I think Steve is going to be a real asset, given his knowledge of negotiations and stuff with his time in Acton, so I'm looking forward to it.
I agree. So any other questions or comments? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue is a little awkward, yes.
Ford Spalding not awkward, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes. I got distracted.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes, with gratitude.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Jennifer and Steve and Dave. And thank you very much for everything you have done on this committee, so. Anything else that anyone would like to add for the good of the organization? Judy?
Thank you. So it's never too early to start the party. Here we go. So the Lexington Semi-Quintessential Commission is pleased to announce a contest to create a logo celebrating the 250th anniversary of the Battle of Lexington, which will occur in April 2025. The entries will be judged by a panel of artists and community members and displayed in a special showing at a local gallery. The winning design will be awarded a stipend of $1,000 and may be promoted widely in regional tourism and news media with recognition of the participant. The second and third runners-up will be awarded $500 and $250 respectfully. The winning logo may be displayed on a variety of digital and print media and on commemorative items. All high school students who reside in or attend in Lexington are invited to submit entries. So Minuteman, let's do our job again. So I will be forwarding. I think you may already have this information, Dr. B., but just in case, I would just forward it to you. And looking forward to seeing what our students can create. Just as a reference, the winner of the current, we're redoing our downtown area. And that logo for that entire downtown district project for the complete streets has been also by a Minuteman student. So hopefully, we can make it a twofer. So, and I'd also like to add on a different note that, and I believe they have reached out to Aaron Norson. Like I just, we got our first Lexington youth lacrosse interest in the new fields. So here we go.
Great. Thank you very much, Judy. So, you know, we look forward to see what comes. So, Michael?
I've had requests from a couple of parents, several parents, because these go back over the last month. While we've been busy with our superintendent candidate interviews, the requests have been along the theme of a public forum, a town hall meeting, something like that, to ask about Minuteman, COVID, what Minuteman's doing about COVID, what is the state of COVID at Minuteman? A little bit more general and free-ranging in question than than the very significant volume of messages that continue to go to families all the time. A few folks think, feel that they have some questions outside of those, and they'd like an opportunity to have some FaceTime, if that's the platform with the school administration to discuss those things.
Okay, well, why don't you reach out to me tomorrow and we can figure that out?
Sorry, tomorrow's no good. How about some other time?
Figure out a time to connect.
We shall.
To, you know, talk about what you've been hearing and see how.
Thank you.
Some people's needs and concerns. Okay. Anything else for the good of the organization? Okay, and we move on to Principal's report. George?
Hi. Working a new computer here, so getting used to all the functions. Principal's report. So we started our at-home testing COVID program. Speaking of COVID, today, we had 472 students sign up for this program, which was optional, but 472 signed up. We have 119 adults in the building who also signed up for this program. Amy Peral and Megan Elliott did yeoman's work this today, really helping to sort out the tests that we received and distribute them. The sophomores and seniors received theirs today with instructions to take tests tonight. And freshmen and juniors will get their tests next week, and we'll make sure that we pad up the kids a little bit for the vacation week so that they have stuff over the vacation week as well. So that's underway. Seems to be going all right so far. You know, no complaints from faculty who have been using it already for one week. So that's our COVID-19 at-home testing program.
Any questions? Okay.
Great. So there are three field trips that we have up for approval. The first is an out-of-state field trip for horticulture to the Logies Greenhouses in Danielson, Connecticut. It's kind of a big deal. It's one of Martha Stewart's favorite places because there's all sorts of rare and unusual plants that they have there. There's a 150-year-old citrus tree that has 10 different grafts on it, which is a big deal, I guess, if you're, I really don't know what that means, but they do, and they're all excited about it. It's a little retail store. So sophomores and seniors will take that trip on February 10th. Freshmen and juniors will take the trip on February 17th. So they'll get to observe the operation of how the greenhouse works and, you know, the wholesale, the retail side of it, and it'll be, I think it'll be a good trip for them. Students will follow all of the COVID protocols that we have and any that pop up as far in terms of the greenhouse.
So I will move to approve the out-of-state field trip for the Horticultural Program to the Logies Greenhouses in Danielson, Connecticut. On February 10th, sophomores and seniors. And February 17th, freshmen and juniors as presented.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Only if they need another chaperone. It sounds like. It's right up my alley. I understand the grafting thing. No, it's as, I mean, we haven't done a field trip in so long. This is exciting.
Right?
I know. Judy?
You beat me to it, Jennifer. If you do need another adult, please, you know, I think we'll have to have our own lottery to see who would go. I just, I just have one quick question. The times are different for the two different grade trips. So I didn't know.
That's, that's reflection of our one week there in CTE programs, the opposite week there in the, there in the academic program. So that way they don't have to miss any academics in order to go.
Okay, thank you. We just saw the difference. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Jeff?
So my only question on any of these field trips is that, of course, we're following the COVID protocols. All the parents have agreed to these field trips, and they understand that field trips are still maybe a little riskier than we would like at this point. Just so that everybody understands it, especially in the overnight one, that although, you know, the, obviously, the numbers are going in the right direction, as long as everybody understands and has signed off on it, then I'm all set.
Yes. Yep.
That wasn't all set. Okay. And any other questions? Okay, let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes? Okay, I just read your lips, Michael, and I think that said yes.
That was a yes, Madam Chair.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, one of the next field trip.
Yes, next field trip is for the Environmental Program to the University of Connecticut's Hydrology Field Training Station on May 9th, or an alternative date of May 11th, with approximately 12 students participating. There's a pretty good description of this, I think, in your packet. I'll just say it's the Water Resources Field Station provides a location for developing field data, mapping, drilling, hydraulic well testing, and water quality analysis, and provides a connection between the classroom and the real world. Again, students will follow our protocols, our COVID protocols, and any that the University of Connecticut will require.
So George, the agenda says the Horticultural Program, but it's environmental?
It's actually environmental, yep.
Okay, I thought, I didn't sound right for Hortical. Okay, so I'm gonna go, I'm gonna change the vote to approve the out-of-state field trip for the Environmental Program to the University of Connecticut's Hydrology Field Training Station on May 9th or May 11th as presented.
In a second? Okay, thank you. Any questions, Jeff?
Just a quick comment. This is at the University of Connecticut, right? In 1978, I was going for my master's degree in computer science at the University of Connecticut. And if any of you remember the blizzard of 78, I spent a portion of that in the dairy bar at the University of Connecticut, being an Aggie school, with a friend from Massachusetts, eating large ice creams, watching the snow fall down.
And I was probably serving you that ice cream.
I do.
I spent a year in stores one July. Very quiet town.
Yes, the most exciting thing that happened during my stay at Stores, Connecticut, is that the neighboring town Willimantic got a second McDonald's. We had Rush Minute at the University of Connecticut on Fridays.
Well, and I hope that the students will have these memories. Okay, any other, any other comments or questions? Let's do our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, so we move on to the third field trip.
Sure, and this falls probably more under the Horticulture Program. We'll visit the 92nd Annual FFA, Future Farmers of America State Convention, at the Sturbridge Host Hotel, Sturbridge, Mass., with approximately 25 students participating. The event is scheduled for March 16th to the 18th. Of course, just as Jeff has said, it will depend a little bit on COVID, and, you know, it could get canceled. You just, you never know. The cost of the trip is funded by the FFA account, so it's all set. We have kids preparing for different competitions. There's a chapter exhibit, reporter's book, a science fair. We have kids working on a service project and some leadership work as well. I don't know who the motivational speaker is this year, but they usually, you know, we'll get feedback on that at the General Assembly. And it's just, you know, it's a good way for the kids to connect who are interested in life sciences to participate in. So that's what we have for the Horticulture trip.
And if I may, just to cross our Ts and dot our Is, it really should read for the FFA chapter, the Minuteman FFA chapter, to attend because we have students from several different CTE programs that are members of FFA.
Okay, I was gonna ask about that.
Umbrella.
Yeah, it mentioned, it mentioned both environmental and animal sciences and health. So I will vote to approve the overnight or day field trip over three days, or day trip over three days, field trip for the FFA chapter?
Chapter, yep.
To the 92nd Annual FFA State Convention at the Sturbridge Host Hotel, Sturbridge, Mass. as presented.
Any comments, Jeff?
Field trip.
The, the vote does not contain the dates in it.
Oh, you're right. Hold on.
And the dates are?
March 16th to the 18th.
Dates, March 16th to the 18th, yep.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Any comments? And let's move to our roll call. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, thank you. George, anything else?
No, thank you very much. It's good to get the kids back on the road. You know, we had our first, we realized today, we had our first in-person assembly with an outside agency for the kids ever in that new building. So it was kind of, we're breaking all new ground again. It's nice to get back to normal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Superintendent's report. Ed, before you start, I just wanted to call the school committee's attention to the letter in the packet from Kevin Mahoney of his decision to resign as a member of the Minuteman Retirement Board. And I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Kevin and to thank him for his years of service.
Well said. So given that resignation accepted with gratitude and even more gratitude from the superintendent, I've, I'm asking the school committee to approve Nikki Andre, our business manager, as the representative to the board.
I will move to, I will move to appoint Nikki Andre as the Minuteman Retirement Board Representative, starting March 1st, 2022.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Jeff?
Does she require any specific qualifications to be that member, or can we choose whoever we want to, to do so?
Well, that's an interesting question that I've never been asked, but she has all the qualifications, and I'm recommending her. So you could choose whoever you'd like, but.
But are there any licensures or anything that are required, I guess, is the?
No.
Okay.
If I can, Ford Spalding, if I can just jump in, I've been at their board meetings a couple of times years ago, and there's no requirements that I can take up.
Well, and Nikki's excellent, so I would, I would highly recommend her as well, so.
I'm not quite sure how to take that, but okay.
Any other questions or comments?
We do have Nikki's concurrence, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, um, let's move to our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stulven Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Thank you, and thank you very much, Nikki, for stepping up to be our representative to the Minuteman Retirement Board. Of course.
The next item is just an update on the vaccine clinic. We had, we had 88 people come to Minuteman and get a vaccination. Most of the folks were getting boosters, but there were some folks who got their first vaccine at Minuteman. We opened it up to the town of Lincoln, being the good neighbor that we are. And we had a few people from Lincoln come as well. So the folks that were working the clinic, the medical people said it was the best place they've ever had a vaccination clinic. So we were, we're happy to do that. I don't know if there are any questions about that.
I don't see any.
Okay. School Building Committee report forward.
At our last building committee, we reviewed the budget, counting all committed funds that we are aware of to date. We should have to have at the end of the project $637,565. That's the report.
Can you say that number again, Ford? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
I think Jeff has a question.
Yes, Jeff.
You split that among the board members, right?
No, we have, we have.
Strike that from the minutes, please.
Right. I have a real question.
Go ahead, Jeff.
The real question is, I would like, at some point in the not-too-distant future, a report on the running cost and the maintenance plan for the new building. This is something we've talked about, you know, periodically. And, you know, a new building, you don't know. It's a little bit too early, but despite COVID, we've had it for a while. And at some point, I think that we should have a formal report on those issues. It's something that's on my mind, especially because trying to understand the energy costs. I remember a lot of conversations when we were building the building that has a lot of fairly complicated systems needed to run the building, and we need higher-level people to be able to run those systems better. So I'd like to know, you know, how well are we doing in understanding how best to run the system? Do we have a view of understanding the energy costs, which are higher, a little bit higher than anticipated? And do we have the long-term plan in place for the maintenance of the building, which is, again, all things that we've talked about in the past? And I think that there's no hurry for this, but sometime in the not-too-distant future, I'd like to hear a fairly formal report on these, these, these issues now that everything is, you know, finished. That's just my comment. I don't expect any response or anything. I'm just putting that in the record.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Alice?
So noted that it gets put in the record, but I do strike all of Jeff's jokes from the record.
Thank you.
Yes.
I won't be left with anything then.
Anything, any other questions for Ford? Okay, Jennifer, are you? Nope, okay.
I'm good.
Um, shall we move on?
So I've got Greg, a joint from KBA with us as well, to help answer any other questions. We're continuing to move forward on our capacity building project. As Ford noted, we're going to have about $630,000 left over from the project. And I wanted to give folks a little bit more background on our north building project, which you may recall, well, I actually looked through all the minutes for the last two years, and I think I've mentioned this in all the meetings we've had except one. And so we're really pleased that this is moving forward, and it seems to be within our budget that we presented a couple of times of, I think, $780,000. And there may be a little bit more soft costs in that that have been updated recently. But Greg, are you? Where are you? I can't see you anymore.
I'm, I'm here. Can you see the screen I'm sharing?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
So we have some votes coming up. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We have some votes that we went, talked to the attorneys to make sure that we were doing everything we're supposed to be doing. And just a reminder that this project and the east campus project are not part of the MSBA project. So that's why you see a vote specifically asking the School Building Committee to be involved in the review of this process. Because that's, that's an added requirement or an added request that the school district is making of the School Building Committee.
So do you want us to move all three of these before we have this whole discussion, or do you want to wait until we?
Yeah, that's, I would. Then we can have a discussion.
Okay, so I will do all three at once to vote to appropriate $650,000 from the Capital Stabilization Fund for the person's purpose of paying for costs associated with the construction of the North Outbuilding Project and a vote to award the contract for the construction of the Minuteman Regional North Outbuilding to see verconstruction and authorize Dr. Edward McQuillan to execute the contract in the form presented to the committee and vote to request that the School Building Committee oversee the North Outbuilding Project. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Shall we move to the presentation now?
Take it away, Greggy. You're on mute, my friend.
There we go. Sorry. Not used to presenting on Zoom. I lost the mute button. So we've looked at this before. So this is just an aerial of the campus during construction. And during the original MSBA construction project, there were two foundations included within that project for future buildings. The original intent had been for storage buildings mainly, but, you know, they're foundations, so we can kind of do a little bit of whatever we want, as long as we play by the rules of the building code, the planning board, and so on and so forth. So as the enrollment at the school increased, Ed came to us and asked, you know, is there an opportunity in either of these buildings to expand capacity? Particularly the north building, I would say, because of the interest in advanced manufacturing, which is down that side of the building that has some kind of growing room that could be taken if some of the metal fabrication equipment was not located in that kind of shop area that they share. So we took a look at this building and, and took a look at what the cost would be to, you know, build a metal, a pre-engineered metal building on this existing foundation that could service the heavy equipment associated with metal fabrication that is primarily used to do the large cutting and shaping of materials as they come in. And then that would prepare them for what happens in the kind of welding area of the shop in the building proper. So that was the project. And when we had originally looked at the timeline, the thought was that we would be. The, the thought was that we would be in with all the work done by the twenty twenty-two fall term. That includes some work done by the Minuteman students, as student projects. Given that we have, you know, started looking at this during COVID, their ability to go do outside projects had been severely limited. At this time, I don't think they were even in school, but this seemed to be an opportunity to not only get some usable square footage to help with enrollment, but also some, some project-based learning that some of the trade shops could participate in over time. So this was the original timeline we had looked at. And since then, we have put a project out to bid, and we have separated those things. So the, the, the general contractor and the students are never really overlapping. The, the general contractor will come in, they'll erect a metal building and kind of get it weather tight. And that'll allow the Minuteman trade shops to come in and install a moderate amount of electrical mechanical systems, a little bit of plumbing, and do some painting and other things that are associated with finishing out a, a building. The primary portions of the building are kind of pre-finished, I would say. So this is a, a, a building that comes up and is erected basically finished in place. And I can go through some of the other things that go into this, but that's the, the kind of big picture lay down of how the project will work. Contract comes in, puts up a building, they then leave, students come in, finish out the building, and then it becomes occupiable. So as we've gone through this process and dealt with, kind of trying to figure out when we could get metal building availability on site. These are very in-demand products right now. Amazon's buying basically everything that's manufactured to make warehouses out of. So, so it's a little bit in-demand, but their, their cost per square foot is still very competitive, if not add much better than a stick-built construction. So that's why we chose to go this route. So the new completion would look to be in the building with students in class, starting January of twenty-three. So when they come back, so a little bit of a delay, but this puts, you know, a, a reasonable timeline to the, the, the supply chain that we're dealing with currently. Originally, our total project cost, we had projected somewhere around seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. We have received bids for the general contractor portion of the, the project. And we have since taken out all of the, the kind of escalators that we put in our, our opinion of cost. And right now, we're projecting the, the total project cost somewhere around eight hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-three thousand. But again, these are initial costs based on, you know, numbers we've gotten in. And we think we have some, some cushion there. It also includes about thirty-six thousand dollars worth of contingencies and legal fees and advertising fees that it's likely we won't use all of, that, that certainly the hope. And we think some of the others have a little bit of cushion, and I'm just to, you know, make sure we have accounted for enough money to, to finish out the project. You can see just on the, on the left-hand side of the screen, a kind of a breakdown of, of, you know, what scope is in, and what, what portion of the work, so general contractor scope versus student work that we've kind of talked about. And so that's really a kind of broad overview of the project. I'm happy to answer any questions and will stop presenting if I can figure out how to do that. There we go.
Okay, any questions for Greg?
So what is the current stabilization fund balance?
We're projecting, so I just remind you that, I think it was last June. The school committee voted to appropriate one point two million out of capital stabilization for the athletic fields, which were rolled into the MSBA project, so we're only probably going to use about half of that. So even if we used all of it, by July first, assuming our budget FY twenty-three budget is passed, we'll have about one point four million in that stabilization account. Plus the six hundred thousand, so we, almost two million dollars.
So that's the six hundred and thirty-seven thousand that was left over from the building project, okay? Okay, so, and then minus the money we're asking to withdraw at this point?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to, I want to know exactly, so we should have about one point three million left in stabilization if we do this.
Yeah, in our budget book on page twenty-one or twenty-two, we have that projected balance of the capital stabilization for each year and, and then projected through the end of this fiscal year. And then assuming, because in FY twenty-three, we have another five hundred thousand dollar contribution to the capital stabilization fund.
Thank you.
Jeff.
Okay, so first I want to mention for the record that this project is something that we've been looking at for half a year or so, and everything we have here is in line with what our understanding has been over that period of time, so there's nothing really new here except for some of the final numbers here. Would that be more or less correct?
Well, we've been looking at it for twenty-three months, yes.
Okay, so twenty-three months, even better. The other thing is, I'd like to know who has examined the contract? Because I was, I'm not able to look at those things and, and interpret them wisely. So who, who are the?
Greg, we hired Castle Booze as our architect on call, and he can discuss the process for that.
Sure, so just let me start, Jeff, with kind of the, the contract we used, because it is different than the contract we used for the school building project. School building project was a D-CAM contract base, so Department of Capital Asset Management, and it was specifically geared towards CM at risk. This project is not big enough to be CM at risk, you have to be over ten million dollars to do a CM at risk process. And the, the market just isn't there to support this small of a project in public sector with CM at risk. So this is a straight general contract bid. I, I'd say of all the work Castle Booze does, probably about eighty percent of contracts are, are, you know, in terms of number of contracts are one forty-nine general construction bids in Massachusetts. In dollar volume, because the CM projects are so big, you know, it probably evens out to about fifty-fifty. So this contract is an AIA, you know, American Institute of Architects standard contract form. That has been modified to incorporate a number of provisions that are inherent in Massachusetts general law. That contract, we have our in-house counsel review it. Just to make sure we get things right as we modify it. But it ultimately, it doesn't, you know, we're not party to the contract, so the contract was reviewed by the district's attorney. As well as the district's insurance provider, because there are insurance provisions within the contract that takes some just input from, from them. So they've both had the opportunity to review the contract, see everything. It is a fairly standard contract form. That's used broadly and has a, a deep kind of amount of litigation that has been used against it, so it is a proven contract form, I would say.
Well, good, that makes me feel good about the contract then, thank you.
Judy.
Thank you for going through this with all of us. Going back to the contract, I noticed there were crossouts on page three, six, and seven. They seem to be initialed by the Seaver signee, but I just, again. To me, it was just unusual, so I assume this, if, if all the councils have looked at it, this is, you know, standard operating procedure.
Yeah, there were some minor deviations in the contract that we published from the advertised and bid documents, which is why things were just crossed off. They, they shouldn't have any meaningful effect on the, on the, the project at all. There was some clarifications to dates, and there was a code drawing that we, we didn't end up needing in the, in the contract documents. That was inadvertently listed in the, in the, in the list of drawings, so I think those were what the crossouts were.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I'll give it a minute. Okay, if not, are we ready to vote on the motion? Or motions? Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford's folding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Carver Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, well, thank you, and thank you for joining us tonight, Greg.
Thank you.
So the, the other bullet down there is the east campus development project. And just to give you a reminder, that is the, what was formerly known as the Tremont School Building. Or formerly known as the MIT Lincoln Lab Daycare Center. It's about a sixteen thousand square foot building. That we believe could add more capacity to the school, specifically in service to our veterinary assisting animal wellness program. And some additional classroom space. Several year, well, in two thousand and eighteen. The governor signed special legislation for Minuteman. That legislation was included in your packet as well. That allows Minuteman to enter into long-term leases with mission-compatible strategic partners. And any revenue generated from that partnership is to be deposited in a fund that is to offset the capital debt obligations of the district. So we established that law, had that law passed with the help of Jay Kaufman and Cindy Friedman. And the rest of the legislature in order for us to pursue a, a public-private partnership with, with at the time was what we thought would be a, a recreational athletic field partner. And that, one of those partners included the town of Lexington, as well as some other semi-private and private-for-profit concerns. Well, that never worked out. But we still have the legislation, and as a matter of fact, the current, there is a form of this legislation being proposed for the entire state. Where any regional school or any school district could have long-term leases with mission-compatible folks. But the purpose of that was to make the business model more attractive for outside partners to invest in our facilities and invest in our, our mission, really. And so as we look to trying to add capacity to the school district without adding more debt. This seems to be a logical vehicle to use. And at the time, previously in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we put out on the street a request for information, which beginning on page twenty-five of your packet, I believe, is a draft of a similar kind of request for information, really targeting the animal health and wellness facility. So I wanted to just kind of remind you that, make you aware of that, that's the, the plan at this point. I think it's the most. It provides the most opportunity with the least amount of cost to the district, but the benefits are significant. We do not have, at this point in time, any particular company or strategic partner that's fully lined up. We do have Blue Pearl that has agreed to donate design services, agreed to donate equipment. But in regards to the cost of a renovation, they are not committed to that. So this is an attempt to try to get a strategic partner to see the value add for investing in that part of our campus over the long haul, and this is just a request for information. It's not a request for proposal. If there were enough folks interested, that would help us write a request for proposal. So that's it.
Any questions for Ed?
Okay.
Doesn't seem to be.
For the town of Lincoln and permitting fees, yesterday I was informed by our attorney that he had spoken to the Lincoln Town Attorney. And he had all kinds of things for us to talk about. However, we did not have an executive session that has been identified for the same purposes, so I'm unable to share that. However, at the next meeting, we will have an executive session specifically in regards to the recommendations from our attorney in pursuing of the recovery of these excessive permitting fees.
Okay.
I don't see any questions, Madam Chair.
Oh, I don't either. Move on.
Watertown. Yeah, have you have received anything yet?
No, have you?
Neither have I. But Pam and I were watching a Watertown School Committee meeting last night. Where they, the Watertown Ad-Hoc Committee on Vocational Tactical Education. I guess all they did was establish the committee and identify consultants that they had hired to help them in this study.
Any questions?
That concludes my report, Madam Chair.
Hey, thank you very much. There are no questions, we will move on to finance report. So Rich or Steve?
Or, or just quickly, the finance committee met last evening. We did, we did look at the calculation for the capital fee for our, our non-district students. And the superintendent will be submitting to DESI the, the, the increments for type A municipality will be eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. And for B municipalities, six thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and twenty cents, doesn't really take a board vote, it's a submission to the to DESI, so we, we did go over the calc's with, with Ed, and, and that will be moving forward. We also, as, as you remember, when we, we talked about OPEB a, a, a meeting or so ago. One of, one of the recommendations coming out of the study committee was that, that the finance subcommittee look at, look at the kind of financials and the investment performance of, of the OPEB trust fund on, on a semi-annual basis. So we, we did look at that the other night. Everything looks fine, looks like the investments have been done in accordance with our, with our investment policy. And I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but, but, you know, things, things, we have over a hundred something thousand dollars in the, in the trust right now. And obviously it'll be growing if we start following the recommendation of the, of, of the study committee. And I guess with that, I could turn it over to Rich or whatever.
Okay, Rich.
You're on mute, Rich.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. The next item for you is, I'm asking the school committee to approve the special education increment fee of seven thousand one hundred and dol, seven thousand one hundred dollars for non-resident students for FY twenty-three.
They moved.
Okay, any questions? Any discussion? No, okay, do our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Ford's folding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Carver Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice Lucas, Joe, yes, and I think the reason there were no questions is because it was very clear. Alice to Lucas Joe, yes. And I think the reason there were no questions is because it was very clear.
I had a whole presentation available, too.
Well, we don't want to stop you.
The, the next item for your, for your approval is a fifteen boxes of office supplies that was donated by a parent of a student of ours who wished to remain anonymous of office supplies.
I will vote to approve the monthly list of donations.
Any comment?
Nope.
Pam Nurse Acton, yes.
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Ladue Concord, yes.
Or it's folding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Crocker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stul and Needham, yes.
Alice to Lucas Joe, yes.
Okay, Rich, anything else?
No, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on to Committee Reports and our Communications Access and Admissions. Jeff?
I believe that Anthony has a update for us on admissions.
Great.
Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Anthony's not available. So just as of today, you can see that we're up to two hundred and ninety-one applicants from our nine-member towns. Let me just, there we go. That's up about fourteen percent from last year. And it's up about forty-nine percent from five years ago. You can see the change year over year in the green column at the right. Most towns are up a little bit. Concord is up somewhat significantly. I don't know if anyone had any questions about that. Qualified applicants, a qualified applicant is a student who has gone through the interview process. All the records have been received. And at this point in time, we have two hundred and fifty-five fully qualified applicants. And we have a hundred and sixty slots allocated. That's based upon our current enrollment capacity of six hundred and twenty-eight, up a couple. But this shows you the difference right now as it stands between the slots available and the number of applicants that have applied. So you can see in Acton, they have eighteen slots. And they have thirteen students over their slot allocation. Arlington has fifty-four slots over its allocation. So we have nearly a hundred students over the application. Now, we're going to accept a hundred and seventy-five. So there's some give and take there, and when we go through the process, there's usually a a falloff in the number of qualified applicants who actually accept enrollment. But we're in a, you know, enrollment has changed. These are our out-of-district applicants. At this point in time, we have ninety-seven. We are required to begin processing those. Even though we have one week left for our member-town applicants to submit their full applications and become qualified, we still, based upon our policy, need to accept out-of-district applications, even though we're being very clear with these families that there will probably be no out-of-district applicants accepted for the fall. You know, as there may be some transfers that we don't know about or something that happens, someone moves from one town or another, but as far as our, our process goes, this is what we're looking at.
Ed, in that previous slide, Hanscom is counted as a municipality?
Yes, they're part of the Lincoln Public Schools.
Any questions on this for Ed? It's good news, sobering.
Arlington is, Arlington is oversubscribed by more than a hundred percent. I'm, I'm still not quite sure, excuse me, Hanscom, Hanscom is its own designated applicant pool?
Yes, there's a, a middle school in Hanscom that's run by the Lincoln Public School, so they're considered out-of-district applicants.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, I see a lot of sober faces there.
Yes, Alice.
I'm just sorry, we can't take them all, and I think it just speaks to that this type of education is actually what a lot of kids want. And Minuteman is doing it right. And I just wish we had a way to offer it to everybody.
No, I, I agree.
Well, if we get these capacity buildings done, we'll have, be able to offer to more.
Any other comments? Jeff?
Well, this is very sad. And it's also, we're going to have a, some unhappy families who are going to be wanting to talk to us, and we have to understand that that's going to happen. And having so many students not be able to come is very sad. It's obviously, it's it's good to see that the popularity of this kind of education is reaching more students for whom it could make a big difference in their life. That's a good thing. But it is a little stunning for me, you know, even with what happened the last few years, I'm looking at these new figures, and I'm still a little bit stunned, a little speechless. So that's just my, my comment. I wish, as long with Alice, I wish we could accept more. I hope that in the near future, we'll be able to accept more. But I think we're going to be talking to a lot of people this year. It'll be eye-opening for a lot of people, not just us. I think it's going to be very eye-opening, and we're going to have to have a lot of interesting conversations along the way.
I will mention, you know, I appreciate, a, as you can imagine, I appreciate the, and share a sense of, I don't know what the word is, frustration. It's almost boiling over to anger to me that we don't have a school big enough, but I'm going to stop that right now. There is going to be a point, though, where we really can't even consider out-of-district applicants because it is an incredible investment in time and resources that Anthony has to expend. And I would ask you to consider for next year that we not even consider out-of-district applicants. Because we have to go through the process, because our process says we will accept those applications. And now Anthony, for the next month, is going to be tied up interviewing a hundred kids that aren't going to get into the school when we may have fifty, seventy kids of our own that aren't going to get in. So it's just an allocation of resources that needs to be considered in the future, and it has to go through policy, I believe, so.
Okay, I have seen a lot of hands. Michael's was up first. So Michael, Jennifer Ford.
If we could briefly roll back to the slide that has the applications, qualified applications by member towns. If that's possible. If not, the question is summarized like this. Okay. We'll pause a moment for that to come up. Just previous to that. Yeah, there we are. Okay, I, I don't know how to answer. Perhaps it's my, my lack of time of service here, but I know I'm going to get asked, okay, Arlington has ninety-two qualified applicants competing for thirty-eight slots. Are those ninety-two kids, is that their own pool that they're competing against first for those thirty-eight positions?
Can you ask the question a little differently? I'm not sure what you mean.
When a town has more qualified applicants than slots available, is its pool of applicants competing against the general pool of all applicants from all district towns, or are they first competing for the slots within that town? In other words, the, the, do we actually have nine acceptance rates here?
Well, the, the policy describes how applicants are ranked. And they're ranked in a way that fills the allocation of each of the towns, and then the, the applicants are all pooled after that. So beyond the, beyond the thirty-eight or forty kids that Arlington would get, the, all those Arlington kids are in a pool with all the rest of the towns, yes.
So the best thirty-eight are in, and the rest of them compete again with everybody else that is above that town's number of slots.
Well, I would hesitate to use the word best in this, you know, it, we're using a, a process to rank applications. And so the ranked applications are used in accord with our policy. And, and then students are offered admission, you know, beginning February sixteenth. And then if we don't hear back by folks by March first, then the, they go to that pool, so.
Okay.
So I have a quick request. Can we just get this information sent to us?
It's in your packet. What, what other information?
Oh, I didn't see it in the packet.
Isn't it in the packet? Yeah, I think it is, isn't it?
No.
Well, maybe it's not, because it just came today.
Yeah, I didn't get, I didn't see it. So can you just, can we make sure we get that? Thank you.
Okay, I think Ford is next.
Jen asked my question.
Okay, any other questions? You know, I think the theme, I believe that last year's town meetings that you went around was managing our success. And, you know, this certainly is part of what we're looking at now.
Yeah, I've, I have a couple different themes that I've thought of, but.
Jeff, anything else on CAA?
I think that the, the sobering slides that we just saw are the end of the presentation, and we probably, I add, a number of us have a number of conversations we wish we could have to people in the past. But that isn't going to happen, and we have to deal with the people who are here now who appreciate the school and want to come and have, have conversation with them. End of the CAA report.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. And, and again, while I feel like we're ending this report on a sobering note, I do want to reflect back on, you know, how uplifting it is to see the interest in Minuteman right now. And so, you know, let's remember that that's a part of this, too. Policy, Alice.
Huddy, so you can forward to page fifty-five in the Bates numbering system at the bottom right-hand corner. So the Bates numbering system is actually from the late nineteenth century, and it's this really great method of stamping a document consecutively, so you can have other page numbers in there and, and, and be certain at the end of the day that you have all the pages. So I'm just sharing that little bit of information. So the use of school facilities, something we've been working on since two thousand and nineteen, and the last time that we really got going on it was October of two thousand and nineteen, which of course is right before the start of the worldwide pandemic. So it's back. And Amy Peralt and Rich Iconin have been working on this policy with the Policy Subcommittee for, for quite some time, and as of November of two thousand and twenty-one, we learned the interesting information that Lincoln does not allow one-day liquor permits, which kind of made the question that kind of stalled us out on this before become moot. That was just for anyone, I don't know if any of you weren't involved in that discussion, but there was some disagreement about that, and we don't have to worry about it anymore because Lincoln doesn't allow them, so, and the schools in Lincoln. So if you look on page fifty-five where it says alcoholic beverages, you'll see that we have that reflected in this policy. It's pretty short, and what it is doing is allowing the district to kind of, it, it enables the district to use the facility usage guidelines, which are the following document, which is on page fifty-eight. So if you look on page fifty-nine, you'll see the needs of Minuteman take priority over any potential rental and or facility use from any outside group or organization. That is in the second sentence of the overall policy, so you know that the facility is for Minuteman, and the Minuteman kids come first. And then after that, the school district may choose to do other things because we've talked and talked and talked about realizing some of the rental income from the property. And so this is mostly Rich Iconin. I don't know if I'm saying your name wrong, Rich.
It is fine.
Well, what is it right? What is the right way?
It's Iconin.
Iconin, okay, Rich Iconin. So he's gone through this and and revised it quite a bit, and Dr. Perrot as well, and I think there are just a couple of comments that I received late this afternoon relating to page sixty and sixty-three, so hang on just a second. So on page sixty, it says a twenty-five percent down payment is required at least two weeks before the event, but on page sixty-three, payment is due in full when the permit request is submitted. So the question that was asked is, are these two different requests for use? And maybe Rich knows.
No, that's just a oversight on my behalf. It should be the, the second, the third bullet, fourth bullet on, on sixty-three should reflect what's page, on page sixty, so I've already made the change and updated it, so.
Okay, so what we're looking at for tonight is a first reading of the admissions policy, and we don't actually vote on these regulations. This is just the background information to so that you understand what you're enabling by voting on the policy, but they will fix that.
Add something, Alice. The reason why that twenty-five percent is there is so we don't have somebody just haphazardly wasting our time per se of, of say, hey, I want to do it, and then never come back, and we, we've allocated that schedule for them, so that's why the twenty-five percent, to make sure that they're serious.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, if I could, this is the first reading of the facilities policy, not the admissions.
Yeah, thank you, Trudy.
Oh, sorry. I'm, I'm quite tired. So KF, the use of school facilities, is the policy that we're, we're proposing to vote on for first reading, starting on page fifty-five and ending on page fifty-seven. So maybe we could get a motion.
They're moved.
Second. Okay.
So maybe, are there any other comments or questions about the use of school facilities policy, KF?
Jeff?
This may not be the right time to discuss this, but the only question I have is on the facilities use and rental fees and where those numbers came from. The draft.
I can help. Well, I think it was about eight or nine months ago, we looked at what other folks were, were charging. Correct. And tried to find a, you know, a sense of the market, I guess is the way to describe it from a business point of view, and that's And that's where we're providing our member towns with an advantage. But we're not providing for-profit companies or non-member communities with an advantage.
So you believe that the out-of-district rates are regular market rates? And the in-district rates are a discount for our member towns? This is the, and you've done enough research to convince yourself of that with these numbers, is that correct?
Well, what we've heard from the, the market, if you will, is that even our non-member for-profit rates are reasonable. And we've had quite a bit of interest and demand at those rates.
Now, related is your theater is a unique space. I don't know if that's duplicated to any other schools. So are you charging enough for that?
You know, that we don't know. We don't know, we'll have to see what the market will bear. And also see how, you know, particular folks who may be interested in this space might be willing to collaborate with the school from an educational point of view.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think Jennifer had something.
Yes, so my question is about the nonprofits. So the nonprofit in that first section requires eighty percent of the nonprofit membership to be from a member community. Is that? I guess I don't, I, well, I was thinking if we had like large nonprofits. I, I don't know, I, I think that seems a little excessive for a nonprofit.
I believe, I believe what that eighty percent represents is a, is our member towns may have a athletic. So let's say Cocke Kyle comes in and wants to rent our space. They may have Carlisle students or children playing. We, we were, we're, we're looking at, in order to qualify, eighty percent of them would have to come from Concord. And twenty percent would come from Carlisle. Or thus, otherwise they wouldn't be qualifying as a member town.
Okay, so if Oxfam wanted to rent the place, then that would not be considered a nonprofit.
It would be.
It'd be a for-profit organization.
Well, it depends if the five oh three, I mean.
There are five oh three C, but, but obviously they have membership of the millions. And they're not going to have eighty percent of their membership being from a town, from a municipality.
Correct, that nonprofit, but like I said, like, and maybe, maybe I need to clarify better, Jennifer. It's basically for those town organizations that may cross two borders.
Okay, so no, I think that that needs to be clarified. Because I would think that, you know, a more global nonprofit should still be classified as a nonprofit.
Absolutely, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Alice?
I just want to say that Rich and Amy were so great to work with on this. We actually went through every single line, every word.
Thank you very much. It is a lot of work. Well, let's move to our vote. Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Michael Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Gordon Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cracker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stula Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas Joe, yes, and thank you.
And thank you. Thank you, Rich, Amy, Alice, and Judy for all your work. Okay, moving on, we do not have minutes for the committee's consideration tonight. So we will bring them to our next meeting. With that, I think I'd like to entertain a motion to enter executive session.
We need, do we need both?
Uh, yes.
Okay, so I will move to enter executive session, not to return to open session for the following reasons. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, namely the superintendent director, Dr. Kathleen Dawson. And pursuant to purpose three, Mass General Law Thirty, A, Section Twenty, subsection A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Minuteman Faculty Association. As an open meeting, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee, and the chair so declares. Who's going to, who's staying?
So, school committee members, um, I'd like to take these two out of order and have the superintendent at the beginning.
And Julia.
And Julia.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure we have anything to talk about with the superintendent negotiations because we haven't had any discussions since our executive session of last Thursday.
Um, I, I do have something, I just want to clarify our last meeting. So if we, yeah, it may not take long, but I think we will have a few things.
Okay.
Jeff?
Should it say superintendent director-elect?
Yes, I was thinking that too.
That too, thank you for. I noticed when you stumbled, I'm like, wait a second, yes.
Do we have a second on this? Because I'll be a second if there isn't one yet.
I don't remember if we had a second, I think we did.
Judy?
Okay, so I think we're ready to vote. And so Pam Nurse Acton, yes?
Well, Ruderman Arlington, yes.
Steve Willdo Concord, yes.
Gordon Spalding Dover, yes.
Jennifer Leoni Lancaster, yes.
Judy Cracker Lexington, yes.
Jeff Stula Needham, yes.
Alice DeLucas Joe, yes.
Okay, so what we will do now is leave this Zoom account. You all received an email with a separate Zoom account for the executive session. So let's leave this one and join the other Zoom.
And we're not returning to open session, correct?
And we're not returning to open session. Okay, we'll see you shortly.